All right, welcome to the February work session. First thing on the agenda is comments for our student representative, hello?
Hello, everyone.
Have any other days?
Exactly. Some sports updates from the high school. Both of the basketball teams qualified for districts. So the girls have their first round of playoffs tonight at the high school and the boys were scheduled for tomorrow, so I don't know when that's being rescheduled too. And the wrestling team will have their district tournament this weekend. Tonight is also the instrumental concert at the high school for both the orchestra and band. And the student council is starting to plan the annual Mr. Great Valley in honor of Ben Christie, so it's a bunch of people fundraising for that to try to secure one of their spots. So we'll look forward to that show in the spring.
Thank you. All right, next up, program.
Yes, in our first presentation, this is our series of presentations related to full-day kindergarten, and I thank Mrs. Morris for her willingness to provide additional details as we move forward, reminding folks that the plan, as per the communication plan submitted in October, the plan is to make a decision at next Monday night's board meeting. Thank you, Mrs. Morris.
Sure. Good evening. Tonight, I'm here to continue our discussion of what a day in the life of a full-day kindergarten student could resemble in the Great Valley School District. Quickly reviewing a few slides from our last presentation, we know that the benefit of full-day kindergarten program is the opportunity to explore and apply the skills taught through various types of play. Examples of that would be fantasy and imaginative play, constructive play, games with rules, and probably my least favorite, horseplay. Currently, I'm reading a really wonderful book entitled Purposeful Play by Maraz Perselli and Tyler. They remind us that not all learners use language as their primary mode of learning and expression. We know that students benefit from movement and physicality while learning and others through drawing and painting. Play-based learning is a time where children are free to take risks. Looking at the left-hand side of the schedule, you can see the instructional minutes our current kindergarten students have each day. The times on the right, again, a draft, are offered as an example of what the instructional minutes could be. Most certainly, the increased time would provide our already amazing kindergarten teachers with the opportunity to bring purposeful play into the classroom, something our current schedule does not routinely offer. Kathy Hirsch-Pasick, a worldwide consultant with a specialty in language and literacy and playful learning, who also happens to be a professor at Temple University and was one of the investigators on the acclaimed National Institute of Child and Health and Human Development, reminds us that actively engaging the learner while providing instruction is essential. As you can see from these photos of the children in the Westchester area school district, these youngsters are engaged in developing ideas, taking on assigned roles, collaborating, developing rules, and being active listeners, a skill we know that is so very important in today's world. And of course, where would we be without Mr. Rogers reminding us that play is serious learning and the real work of childhood? So with all this knowledge about the benefits of a full-day kindergarten before us, the question is, is the schedule doable and what does it look like? Looking at our current enrollment, district enrollment projections for 2019, 2020, our administrative team, in conjunction with district management group, created draft schedules for all four elementary schools. Our objective was really twofold: one, to ensure that all four schools had the same allotted instructional minutes; and two, to examine the impact on staffing that a full-day program would have on our special area classes, specifically physical education, art, music, library, and STEAM. As of today, based on the current projections, we know that we are able to handle adding a full-day program without increasing the need for additional special area teachers. Let's look, let's take a little closer look at the schedule more closely. Again, this is a draft for Katie Markley, and as you can see, our students arrive at 8:55 and the day concludes at 3:48. The children begin their classes in English Language Arts, engaging in their typical morning routines like morning meeting, interactive read aloud, writer's workshop. And then, right in there, they have something that, for this demonstration, I'm going to call a brain break. And where I envision the children participating in whole-group movements, maybe jumping, hopping, skipping, stretching, dancing, or perhaps that time is used to develop mindfulness skills, which is so very important to our students today, that we want the children focused on what we call how their engine is running. They're concentrating on their breathing, they're having opportunities for stretching, but allows the children to sit calmly. Really, the possibilities are endless there. If we move back to ELA, based on the teacher's lessons, the students are engaged in inquiry-based learning, and there are multiple opportunities for hands-on interaction with materials to build understanding of the concepts. Let's see, does not want to change. Oh, there we go. All right, then we move to the lunch period. In this example, it is 45 minutes in length, 25 minutes for the students to eat, and then another 20 minutes for recess. Then down here, they go back to class after recess. That would be a wonderful opportunity for the teacher to have a read aloud, for the boys and girls to kind of relax, regroup after recess, and then they move on to mathematics. Teacher will have a mini lesson, there'll be hands-on exploration, time for application for the lesson, and then the boys and girls will be involved in small group instruction. There also would be time for remediation and enrichment. Right before we go to specials, you can see right above, there's another recess time across the board, and then the boys and girls move to specials. We are on a six-day cycle, similar to the middle school and the high school, and the boys and girls will have two periods of physical education, library, art, music, and STEAM. And then the end of the day, our boys and girls are in social studies and science, working on some of the curriculum that you see listed up there, and they would alternate through Questions for me at this point?
Hi, Vicki.
Hi.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate everybody who's taken a piece of this on because it's really important for me to have more information than less. So I see how the full-day schedule would lay out. Could you walk us through, real quickly, what is the typical half-day kindergarten schedule in KDM like?
Sure, let me go back to the actual minutes because I would probably incorrectly state them. So you can see now, they have 80 minutes. So the boys and girls come in, again, they do their morning routine, the teacher has an interactive read aloud, and the boy, so in that time, there's handwriting and spelling and small motor and fine motor activities, and the teacher, if you have an opportunity to observe a lesson, is really moving very quickly through all of those skills for the boys and girls. So I find that they don't have the time to actually reinforce what the teacher is instructing them on. Math, 30 minutes, that's just enough time for the teacher to do the mini lesson, then a quick into small group instruction, and the period's over because they have to go off to the next subject, which is a special. They have a lot to incorporate in that three-hour window. Science and social studies is not daily, it is incorporated into the English Language Arts, so you're really even taking more time off that short window of 80 minutes to incorporate the important things that they need to know in science and about our community. Specials, they're in and out, 30 minutes. So again, I think it's that exploration time, and then they only have the 10-minute recess where a full-day schedule, they'd have, say, the brain break in the morning, they'd have the 45-minute lunch period, 20 minutes for lunch, a recess again later in the afternoon, which is what our first graders have also, and then the day would conclude.
So then, that's what we see written, but what we all know that occurs in those classrooms, like Mrs. Demillion, is she here, Kelly, attested to at the last meeting? So all those Cs, communications, all those skills that I think our kids and the world need, we are doing those things in every one of those time slots, so that actually reduces what we're doing there because in Great Valley, those things are important. So I know they're getting, we all know they're getting done. So on the full-day program, those things will actually enhance everything in each time slot, or am I wrong?
That is true. It would absolutely enhance because it gives the play-based learning time for the boys and girls. So if they're learning about money, in the example from Westchester area school district, those boys and girls then had a play-based opportunity where they were doing menus and taking orders and writing the order down and working together in the kitchen to create the hot chocolate, those types of things. So yes, those would be the things that we would be able to add to our curriculum.
Thank you.
This may be too in the weeds, but I'm going to ask it anyway because I've been curious. About the schedule, how much of the schedule is determined by what's best for the kids versus what our staffing allows? One reason I'm asking is just, is, for example, the math placement, I know you said that there would be like a 10-minute period where kids would be read to and they'd be able to calm down for recess, but I've heard a lot of schools have had math at the beginning of the day and it's very successful, and if it's at the end of the day, often kids are like wiped out. So I don't need the answer right now because I'm catching you unaware, but I just, I always want to do things that are best for the kids and make our staffing work to that. And if anybody else wants to speak to it, kindergarten teachers are welcome to.
Well, again, this is a draft, just for demonstration purposes today, but I think, you know, maybe our teachers would say that English Language Arts is best taught first thing in the morning as well as mathematics. I think the separation there really for us is just a demonstration that we don't have to crush it all in the morning.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the teachers are able to have, call upon their expertise about, to some extent, how to teach and when to teach versus dictating like, hey, you have to do math after lunch, if they know that that won't work. Maybe it does work, but I just, I get concerned about this stuff because it seems so easy to fix, yet sometimes we don't.
Right, and I would imagine that if you do decide to approve the full-day kindergarten program, that absolutely will occur with the director of teaching and learning in conjunction with the teacher so we can talk about exactly those things.
So, a little bit to that and her comment around the end of the day, but I, we heard some parents express concerns about whether or not children of that age can survive a day that long and everything. There's no downtime in here, right? So in the Westchester experience, because it's a live functioning full-day kindergarten, have they experienced that issue, do you know? Like, did the kids, just at 1 o'clock, as Steph's kind of alluding to, just hit the wall and run out of gas and everything after 1 o'clock is, you know, worthless because they haven't had a 15-minute nap or whatever, or are they, does it work well, or, I mean, just trying to understand.
Interestingly enough, when we-
Because we've heard some comments from the public about that, so I was trying to make sure.
Sure. When we return to school in September, I have to tell you that all the teachers, first through fifth, are developing stamina. It's unbelievable, the stamina that is lost over the summer. So you do hear that a lot when you go into the room about developing stamina and spending a little more time doing what they're doing. I would imagine that a five-year-old will be tired in the afternoon, and that's where I think it would be important for the teacher to decide what are the appropriate activities afterwards so that it's worthwhile, but that we're not exhausting them too.
A question on the, on the specials. So you showed a schedule, and by the way, thank you, this was really great to see, actually, a day in the life. So you said that you'll be able to accommodate the additional kindergarten, the kindergarten being there full day with the existing staff for specials. I just wonder, is there any impact at all on the other classes, the, you know, first through fifth graders and their specials? Are you cutting back time at all, or is this just?
No, absolutely not.
It's all the same?
We, again, wanted to make sure that everyone had the same instructional minutes across all four schools, and we were able to do that with adding kindergarten to a full day.
And that doesn't change how much art the second graders have or something like that?
It does not.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Everyone has two days of physical education, where it falls in the schedule, it's just, you know, semantics, and then everyone has a period of library, art, music, and STEAM.
Good.
All right, well then, I have to just leave you with one last thought. I would like to share an item with you that I came across, which is a wonderful, brief little story about kindergarten teachers' perspective about play-based learning. And it's entitled, "Play-Based Learning Doesn't Come in a Backpack," and it's written by Deborah Stewart. So my students have been with me for two weeks now, and yet every day, their backpack has gone home pretty much empty. If my parents didn't know me well, they might think that their child isn't learning anything. The reason it is hard to send home anything in the backpack is because nothing fits. I can't send home how we learned to find our own name at the sign-in table. I can't send home how we learned to serve our own snack, and I can't send home how we are getting more comfortable and confident in our daily routines each and every day. I can't send home the beautiful castle four of our children built together, and I can't send home the large canvas all the children painted so beautifully as a community. I can't send home the giggles of the children when our puppet comes out to speak to us. And I can't send home the vinegar and baking soda experiments my students have been exploring since the first day of school.
Thank goodness.
Yeah. No, the things that we have been learning are way too big for our backpack. However, I have been sending home a few things like wet sleeves from the water table, sandy rocks in pockets, paint speckles on faces, and a few worms have made their way home here and there. Oh, and I suspect a few songs are being sung in the car ride along with a story of how we saw a huge spider web in the tree outside. Yes, if you looked inside our backpacks, it would seem like we haven't been learning, but if you look outside of the backpack, you will see cooperation, friendship, independence, collaboration, discovery, testing, questioning, trial and error, confidence, exploration, and play. Thank you.
Next under program, we have the high school program of studies. That is there, and I have to, huge thank you to high school administration, Dr. O'Toole, Mrs. Beck, all of the supporting groups, the department chairs, everyone who has really worked to make sure that the program of studies really aligns to what will be happening in the high school next year. One learning that was discovered this year, and I'm sure it's pretty common, probably not only at Great Valley High School, but I'm sure high schools everywhere, that the program of studies sometimes is not used as the informational document we assume it will be, meaning students don't necessarily use the program of studies to choose their courses. And maybe Ms. Fields can verify this, sometimes the program of studies is a secondary document, and word of mouth from students carries more weight, or teacher selection, or what siblings have taken in the past. So I would really encourage folks to, students primarily, and their parents, to really use that program of studies to guide their decisions. There's a lot of great information in there as we move into course selection.
I have a couple of questions on it.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
First, is this something we'll be approving next week?
Yes, it will be, yes. And the timeliness, again, this is pretty much annually done, so that it's approved for students to select their courses. Yes, I'm sorry.
So two questions, I'll just say them both at once. One is, what are the material changes this year, new things or things being taken away? And then my other question is, I've had a couple of questions in the community just over the past two weeks of, do we teach civics? So what's the answer to that? I mean, I know we have government classes, it's an elective, I know we have history, but if you could answer that as well as just what are the changes to this thing this year, material changes?
And Dr. O'Toole has, is prepared to answer the material changes as well as the embedded civics, because oftentimes that has been a discussion throughout the year, but Dr. O'Toole can answer more specifically. A lot of work has been done, I know, in some of the language, to clean up the language.
Thank you, Mr. Linderman. Yes, so the primary, primary changes that have taken place is to look at, as we've always worked to identify areas within our schedule, particularly in the spring, as we have semester-based courses, what we've started to do particularly in the elective areas for art and also family consumer science, just want to go through my notes here, technology education, is to find places where we had in the past offered courses that were part one, part two, that students were taking to look at how we can offer them that would have normally been offered in a semester fall, then a separate course in the spring, and how they had to be aligned within Skyward to keep students having the ability to take those courses, really combine them as year-long, .5 credit courses. So they're basically the same, except they will be year-long, so students have that consistency of the course over the course of the year. So that have, those are, most of the material changes, the courses themselves and the content that they're going to be teaching has not changed. We're just combining courses that would have been part one or part two into being year-long courses for students. Because we have found, particularly in the spring, once we start having students enrolled in the fall, they're in their courses, but when they make changes to their schedule, it impacts sometimes the spring schedule, and then students have open periods, and it's not a fault to them or to the schedule, it's just the way that things pan out as the spring has started. So we've worked really closely with our elective teachers and department chairs to make sure that this will provide students with opportunities that currently may not be in place. In particular, with art, what we have found is, we have a foundational level, that will be a full-year course, and then the contract is actually going to, the contract already exists, the contract courses for photography as well as digital media, is going to allow the students to differentiate within that contract course so that the teachers are able to, if a student, it's their first time taking the contract art course, will be able to have an entry-level project to work on, whereas students who might have taken it for two years will have a higher-level project to work. And so we've actually combined in the art classes where advertising design and computer animation were separate courses, so students might take, sign up for them, but then they may not be offered due to enrollment. Those are now being embedded into the digital media contract, so students will have a greater likelihood of being able to take those, that class and get that concept. We actually have added a financial literacy. It's actually changing personal finance to financial literacy in the business department, and the financial literacy will be a year-long course compared to a semester-based course. Within some of the other areas, family consumer science, family and consumer science, there were child development 1, 2, 3, 4, and then a fifth career internship. Now we're combining child development 1 and 2, and then having an advanced child development, which will take the place of child development 3 and 4. We've added a culinary arts and cuisine, which is basically taking a previous course and combining into one. So, so for the most part, I give some of those examples around how we're embedding, we, within math, we are adding a financial algebra course based on conversation with our math teachers and students to provide them, and will, will go well, and we're going to recommend students that are considering taking the personal finance course to take the, the financial literacy algebra together. And then we are looking at having the, a calculus course be offered as a dual enrollment option as well. So those are, those are primarily the larger differences if you were to compare the last year's program of study to this year's. And I think the question more so around the embedded, the civics, and, and I know, as Dr. Speaker Paul Binskey shared, much of our, much of the civic standards that are addressed within the Pennsylvania standards are embedded within our courses. As US history, as students are learning those courses, they're, they're embedding the civics learning. But if there are specific concepts or areas that you would, you were curious about, we could definitely provide more information with, with where those areas are embedded within our curriculum.
I've just been asked by older members of the community, we teach civics.
And we do, yes. And our civic standards-
We have had civics in and out throughout the history, I just didn't know-
Sure.
-what our position officially, you know, are we looking, you say we're specifically embedding-
Yes, we have standards that, right, that are guidance from chapter four within Pennsylvania standards, and civics is definitely a standard area that must be addressed within our curriculum across elementary all the way up to high school.
And I have one more question on the, on the changes to the, you outlined them very well, just one, you didn't mention this, so it's probably not a change, but are there any adds or drops of the number of courses that are, I know we changed leveling a few years ago, and so, you know, for example, in math, there might be a, a standard and an honors and a, and a AP. Does all that stay the same this year? Are there any things that have gone or been added in any of the, any of the courses where there exists multiple levels? Are those levels still the same next year as they were this year?
I, I wouldn't, I have to look back to make sure, I don't anticipate or plan, or I don't think I'll, I'll call out to some of my colleagues who were also embedded. We don't have any levels of changes within the academic honors and, and AP levels.
Whatever was offered this year is offered next year in those levels?
Yes, yes.
Because I know that's, people have asked about that in the past.
Yes, thank you. I want to thank my team members who are also back up for me to make sure that I'm giving you the correct information.
Just to make sure everybody's clear, and it's the same every year, these are what's going to be offered, and if there's not enough children, students, I shouldn't call them children, young adults, that sign up for a particular class, that class may not be offered. So if you only have two people who sign up for whatever class, that course may not be offered even though it's in the offering book, right? It's just a minimum enrollment to have these classes.
Yes, and there, there were some courses that were removed from the program of study due to the fact that they were, for example, consumer math, we have not had any students take that. That has been, since, been removed from the program of studies from last year to this year. So there are courses that will no longer run because we do not have students fulfill the enrollment over multiple years, and we do make every effort to provide students with the opportunity to get their first choice, particularly in electives. However, due to enrollment and choices and where students are planning on taking their classes and when, oftentimes, those courses will not run due to enrollment. But our goal with some of the courses, by making them year-long courses, will be to increase the opportunity that students will have, the ability to take those classes, where in the past they, they may not have because they were semester-based courses with low enrollment.
A few things. First, as a school board member, I would love to hear in general if there are classes that are oversubscribed, where more kids want to take the class than we have the capability of teaching, just as like, you know, are we using our resources wisely? So perhaps next year, I'll be off the board, but if, if the other board members would like this information, I would think it would be valuable to know. In that same vein, two more issues. One is language selection. This is a, a big topic of interest for, for me. If a student wants to take a language, let's say German, for example, or Spanish or French, whatever, Latin, is there a cutoff to the number of students in the class, and do we have any capability for adding teachers if, say, suddenly a lot more people want to take German than expected? The other question that I have is not related, but I'll put it out there. The other question that I have is not related, but I'll put it out there. A lot of these courses say, all students taking this class are expected to take the AP examination. Can you just state publicly what happens if a student does not take the AP examination? An AP, meaning advanced placement.
Okay, so with regards to the world languages, we do have cases where students are requesting to take a course, and, and that course due to enrollment may not run, but what we do is, we look at, particularly in the sections that are the upper level four and fives, where AP, sometimes the teacher will have students that would be in both, for example, German four, teaching with, teaching German five, with German five students in the class. So they're still in the course, and they differentiate the needs of the students while they are in the same section. So we will combine sections together, so that students still have the availability to take that course.
At the introductory levels, like Spanish one, French one, German one, Latin one, do you have any rough idea of how many kids are not able to get their first choice of language?
I don't know off the top of that, but I do know Spanish one, in particular, is one of our more popular languages, so the majority of students that do request Spanish one do get Spanish one.
Because I would love, again, this is just, you know, if, if we can't provide it, to find another mechanism to get people languages that they want, because if you, you know, know that you're going into medicine and know that you want Spanish, there should be a way with technology, that if, if we, you know, cannot offer it, that there has to be a way to get it for these kids who need it. So, but if you're saying that the needs are met, we're fine, happy to hear that, just wanted to check in.
I know, I know historically, like, from personal experience, right, the only issue's ever been in seventh grade, where they're doing the exploratory, but beyond that, I've never heard of any students being denied an opportunity to take a Spanish one, or a French, or, you know, getting in eighth grade-
We don't talk a ton about curriculum, and so unless I ask the questions to get the answers, like, I don't want to make assumptions, I'd rather hear it direct, which is why I'm asking.
Yeah, and second steps, like, I would love just to have that data presented to us, be like, these are, this many students picked this course, these students didn't get that course, that'd be very interesting.
Yeah, interesting to see, but I know we've had class, we've had issues where a student is over-subscribed themselves to courses, or they want to take, whatever, they want to take calc, AP calc, but it's offered at the same time as banned. I just picked two courses, don't anybody hold me against that. And the bottom line is, you have to make a decision, because the ban may be offered only once, and the AP calc class may be offered only once, so it's really choice.
But in the future, I would hope that we could have a mechanism like, like teachers teaching, you know, on the internet, our own teachers, whoever, like, there should be a way that we can overcome this. I, I think that we're, we, we need more technology and more creative solutions to make sure people can do both. So, just my two cents. What about the AP class issue?
Right, and just real briefly, just a comment on Mr. Barrett's comment too. We, I know the high school does a phenomenal job of getting students in the courses that they request, and then come August into the first week of school, then once, once those courses are, the students are placed, then it is, it is, obviously, it changes. And so sometimes students that would have wanted to take a course, they were already in, if they change one other class, they may be no longer able to take the course that they wanted, and, and those, those shifts do, do happen. To address the AP question, if a student chooses not to take the AP test, then there is not a penalty to the student.
And one more thing that I've mentioned in the past, but just want to bring it up in this forum. One thing that I'm always curious about is, like, are we preparing kids for college? College is the first time that a lot of kids have these huge lecture halls. I went to, like, a pretty decent college, and holy cow, walked in, and hundreds of people in a class. So I, for one, just want to go on record as saying, I would not be opposed to having larger classes at the high school, you know, assuming that teachers felt comfortable teaching them, and that they were, you know, meeting their needs of the students, but in, in a way of preparing kids, students for heading into college. Because I feel like it's one thing to have a ton of individual attention in high school, but then suddenly, if you're in college, and you're sitting in a big lecture hall and not getting that same attention, our kids should still be able to, to thrive and succeed. So personally, I would love to hear from Great Valley graduates if they felt that the switch was hard, or if there's, you know, maybe a few more large lectures would be beneficial for, for students, so that the transitions will easier. I'm one of nine, but I just put it out there.
Well, wait, where would that fit into this, though? So-
Well, just in general, if we're talking, but it's, but it's, it's about classes. Like, I'm just saying, you know, like, for dumb example, if we're, if we're limiting, and we're not, apparently, but if we're limiting how many kids are taking French or Spanish, you know, maybe try having a bigger class. I mean, obviously, it needs to work through the, the teachers and everything like that, and I'm not an educational expert, I'm just saying, like, I would love for the board to have more discussions about education, and not doing things the way we've always done things, because we think smaller's better. A lot of times it is, but we're throwing these kids into great schools, but really big classes, and there should be some transition period, in my opinion, but I'm open to hearing opinions, and I'm not an educational expert, so.
Oh, we, I mean, we, we did a little of that this year, this year, and I hope we expand on that, because I've, I've always been, I've always been hurrying on that, because we have a classroom at the high school that holds 100 kids, roughly. I don't know what the number is, 75, whatever the number is, right? More than 30.
Yes.
So we have the ability to have a large environment, out of 400 lecturer, I guess you could have it in the auditorium, but, and we should utilize that, and, and so hopefully we can expand on what we tried this year and the next year, because I think that's a big problem, kids go from 25 in a class to 300 in a class.
And you're sitting in a big lecture hall, and, and you know, you're playing on your phone, because you, you're like, holy cow, like, I can get away with it, and then you find you flunked the class. So if you flunk it in high school, it's a lot better than flunking it in college, because you're not paying god knows how much, $60,000 a year to, to be there. You know, I just, and, and, you know, if we are talking about adding kindergarten, it is not a done deal, the vote has not happened, I have no idea how my fellow board members are going to vote, but if we're talking about this, and we're, we're talking about, you know, spending a lot more money to bring kindergarten, I think it also makes sense to, to figure, okay, are, are there efficiencies within the school that we could take advantage of, you know, that, that instead of spending more money, spend less money, or spend it in a sparter way. So I'm mentioning it now, just because it's, yep, I'm looking at the whole big picture, not just little pieces.
You know, when you talk about having large classes for these purposes of, of getting students prepared and ready to learn in an environment where it is not so hands-on, and they're more receiving information in a large group setting, there are also a lot of costs, you know, associated with that. Most colleges, they have, you know, clickers that they need to use to answer questions, check into class, you know, so it is more interactive, but there's a cost associated with it. So it's not necessarily just a matter of putting them in a large classroom and, and, you know, synthesizing a couple of sections together.
And I totally agree with that. Often the large lectures, you have seminars, but I'm just saying, in, in general, to start this conversation, I'm trying to get my words in before I leave the board, you know, to start having this conversation, or at least think, we don't have to do the thing that we've always done things, if you, if we talk to graduates and find, hey, like, it would have been great to have a really large chemistry class and smaller seminars of 10 people or something. You know, I know, right now, we don't like to have super small classes, but there might be something that we could do different, that would better prepare kids for life outside of, of high school, whether or not they go to college, trade school, work, whatever.
Steph, I just love the spirit of your question. What if, what if we tried? Or what if we thought, or what if we thought differently about the way we've done things in the past? It doesn't mean we have to do it, but thinking differently and sort of turning the way we've done things on their head might uncover interesting and exciting new opportunities for students.
And I think a lot of the teachers have ideas, too, and so to be receptive, like, I'll say, like, I have very little communication with teachers. I know the, the teachers that my kids have, and I've been blown away at how great they are, but, but I don't have a lot of teachers coming up to me saying, I have this great idea, and I feel like sometimes we're missing that opportunity, because I truly believe that we have some of the best and brightest teachers in the state, in our school district. And, and I, you know, again, I'm, I'm trying to get Steph in before I leave, so I just, I would hate to see missed opportunities, because we haven't asked, or we're not open.
Also, you know, maybe it's time to have that dialogue, but I, I would really think that all our stakeholder groups within our school district community, meaning our students, our teachers, our administrators, I would be interested in, in maybe looking at it holistically and, and as a way of, okay, if we had an opportunity to re-craft, identify the gaps from their standpoint. The kids may have a completely different view, they're, most of them are going to college, they may, we may be polling them, and they say, whoa, 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 you know, no. But I think, I think if we have the conversation, I think it would be helpful for me if we all had the conversation. I, I think the kids are an important part of this discussion, so maybe we could figure out how to bring that back.
Challenges-
But I want, I don't want-
Well, if there was a curriculum committee, I'd be very open to that.
I don't want Stephen to leave, because I do have a couple of questions about your presentation. I've been keeping them on my mind. So Stephen, I've had two children go through. When my kids went through, we were equally as blessed as the children that are going through now. It's been, it was always consistent, and there was a protocol for children who did book a course, and then when they got their, when they got their schedule, they were not able to take that course. And the mechanism was that the guidance people actually walked them through. They didn't, you didn't just get a note that said, sorry, you can't do this, pick something else. The children were actually walked through as to how they could find something that's similar, but maybe different, that would work within their schedule. Could you just go over the mechanism for those children? What, what do we, what, what would the child do when he gets his schedule and he sees that two of his electives, which are the only two electives he can pick, he doesn't have? Can you just walk it through, so that we hear it on?
Sure. My understanding is, at, at the high school, in the summer, then after the schedules have been released, they are, opportunity to come in and make any course changes or recommendations of, if they work with the guidance counselor to identify if, if there's a course that they didn't receive, or there is a course that they're in, but they need to shift, that they have the opportunity to make that, and, and work with the guidance counselor to work on how those, that shift would be made. But then, as you mentioned, there are then discussions about if, if it's a singleton course, maybe there's only one course offered that they wanted to continue to take, they do have the conversation, what are their plans post-graduation, to make sure that whatever decision they're making is the best decision for the student in that conversation with the parent. So for example, if they're thinking of going into a pre-med, and they're in a, and they really want to make sure that they have the AP bio, then they may have to make a decision that the only options are during these two periods that AP bio is taught, that they would have to sacrifice, I would say, not, not, meaning because it's a sacrifice of, of, of will or determination, but maybe another area would have to be something that they don't take, so that they can maintain that AP biology course. So the guidance counselors, along with the high school administration, will then work with making those schedule changes for the students that are best, in the best interest of the student, and to make sure that they are not making a decision that will, that they don't realize the ramifications of that decision after they're, they've made it, or years later, when then they're applying to a college that they're interested in, they sometimes will say, well, what are your goals after high school? And if it's an honors level, you won't want, you may not want to consider dropping, going to an academic level, or maybe you want to consider taking an AP level. So there are those conversations that take place to make the best decision for the student, and that the student is as informed as possible in making those determinations with the parents.
We had, we had heard in the past, for example, that California has specific rules about arts being required for some of their classes, so I think that, from what I hear, Great Valley's doing a good job in letting people know who might be interested in studying in California, but it's, it's weird things that, you know, I would never have considered.
And, and that's something, over the years, that we've had even conversations with students who have graduated, who have attended, or have applied to, for example, Carnegie Mellon, who have said that having after BC calculus, needing the linear algebra, has been a benefit to them. So, so those are all things that we do listen, and, and listen to students who have graduated, who have come back and shared, this is what, what I've needed to do, or the college may, and our guidance counselors are very much in tune with, with admissions officers to identify that our students may need to take a summer course to apply to a particular program that's competitive. And so then we look at, how do we embed that course either within our program of study, and if it's a select few, work with area universities to identify students having the opportunity to take that, or look at even online options for those students if, if it, it best fits their needs.
See, this is stuff, as a board member, I would love to hear, because I feel like we often don't hear these discussions about the curriculum, like, stuff seems to kind of happen, and, you know, usually happen pretty well, but just to hear that this is going on, I think gives us more appreciation for what is going on, and a greater understanding of how these things work.
I am all for a curriculum committee, I think that's a really good idea, and I would like us to be more informed of that. I know you won't be here to preside on, or be part of it, but, and I, I just wanted to, to make a couple remarks with that, along with talking to teachers or other stakeholders, students about what they need, I am sure there's other schools across the country, across the state, and even in this area, who are experimenting with different things, like, you know, the idea, some of the ideas we're putting out there. So I'm sure we could learn from that. I know some of us are going to the National School Board Association Conference, there's probably other ways to learn, but I think that's something that we can look at, too. We don't have to reinvent the wheel, other folks have tried some of these things, and some have worked and some haven't. One more comment, just on the, the core selection and the electives. Unless things have changed, I, I've done, gone through the seven years in a row now, you cannot touch your electives in the summer. You can change your, if you don't get the core course you want, you can do that in the summer, otherwise you have to wait till the end of school year. Just, just to set, in case anyone's watching this and saying, oh, I'm going to opt out of art in July and go for engineering, you can't, right? And then, now an actual real question, the, the language arts, that we, the world languages that we have, I have heard that other school districts start a year earlier, and so the kids can finish French five, Spanish five, whatever, in 11th grade, and then maybe they have a literature class, or maybe they go on to something else. So it's, I may not be 100% correct in that, but I think that's the case, that other schools start a year earlier in middle school, or maybe they don't have that exploratory period, so those kids are a year ahead of our kids in world language, and I, I want to know if that's something we ever looked at, or what it would take to look at that. I mean, we all know that, you know, sorry, we don't all know, I'm not a professional educator. My, my sense is that the earlier you start a foreign language, the easier it is, and if, if other schools are starting a year earlier, is that something we can consider?
World language is something that we've had conversations about, not only at the high school, but also looking at within the middle school. I know our course one offerings are in eighth grade, so students do have that first year of, of a world language in middle school, that they can then, when they transfer into the high school, ninth grade could be then at the level two. Oftentimes, we have some students who may have experienced their level one course in the middle school, and decided they wanted to switch the language, and then that becomes then a conversation, this happened this past year, I can speak of one example, of a student who took a foreign language, world language in, in middle school, and wanted to change to take German, but German one numbers were, were not supporting a, a section of German one. However, we worked with the family to have that student be able to demonstrate the knowledge and understanding of, of German skills before entering into ninth grade, so that the student was able to take German two. So we do work with families in, in that, in that capacity, if that's something that we have to look at for, for students, so it, it, those are-
I'm trying to think if we could, if we, I think TE is, starts a year earlier, I think they have one in seventh grade, I may be wrong.
In seventh grade, okay.
Which means that they get, they're a year ahead of ours, and the kids could get further along in a language before they graduate high school, or they can finish language in 11th grade and do something else in 12th grade. So just don't know if we've looked at it, benefits or not, but I would like, obviously, we're not going to change it for next year's program, but something we should think about.
But remember, I mean, if you finish in 11th grade, that's only three years of high school foreign language on a college trans, on a college credit, right?
Then they have some kind of literature class.
No, I understand, yeah, but I mean, that's, that's the gap, right, is-
Absolutely.
Seventh and eighth grade don't count towards college.
They take the AP Spanish in 11th grade, then in their senior year, they don't have that level of Spanish for four years.
Before, before we move on, I, I just, I, I sit here and I often hear us make comments that I think give the wrong perspective. You know, there is an awful lot of collaboration going on between districts on multiple levels. Chester County, we've got, 25% of our schools are in the top 20% of the state of Pennsylvania. There is an incredible amount of collaboration. So Great Valley has often been a leader in, in moving that charge, as to what are our neighbors doing and why. We feed off of one another, that's what makes Chester County so strong, educationally, I think part of what makes Chester County so strong. The superintendents meet and collaborate, the school board presidents meet and collaborate. A lot of what we're talking about, we'd like to- A lot of what we're talking about, we'd like to see, you know, more of this done. It really is being done. It's just not on the level that the board lives. We live up here, the collaboration between other districts and other states and universally is done on the superintendent's level. So a lot of that is being done and it's, it's an ongoing thing and it's actually a magnificent thing. And Stephen, you and, and your staff and our administrators do a wonderful job at that, especially bringing back to us what you find. So I, I appreciate all the time and all the effort and, and I do think we do a great job with our kids, but I also do agree with staff. I, I think it would be a great thing for us. I know tracking is very difficult, especially after our children leave us, to get information as to, well, how well did we do? Did you think you needed something else? You can't make people answer, especially after they're not our charges. But I think for what we're doing, we've definitely been moving the bar upward and I'm grateful. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I just wanted to include at the high school, just for those that are watching and for those that have students in the high school, this year it was added two days for the drop at, prior to school starting, students can come in and adjust their schedules. So, and it is two days prior to school starting. Students can come in if they need to make a, a schedule adjustment. And it is accurate, as I'm told by my high school administration, that priority is given to the core courses. So it's after schedules are released, students prior to school starting can come in, but certainly the core courses are priority to the electives. Also, the institution, when we first started committees, when we looked at the Instructional Technology Committee, that truly, the goal of that committee is curriculum. So I know this evening, and I just want to thank, we had three teachers come and I don't know, is that going to be next week's update on the committee? But that really is an opportunity to speak about curriculum. And I know tonight it was very heavy in curriculum that also dealt with technology, but it does not have to be purely technology, because really that should be enhancing what we do, not the focus of what we do. So it definitely is an existing committee and I think we can definitely adjust that to talk more curriculum there.
We should definitely do that, then more people would come.
And the committee is myself, Brian Headsit, and Mary. And if the two of you would like my seat, because I am not good at making that committee for 20 different reasons, including tonight where I couldn't get a ride, you're welcome, either one of you to have that seat if you want it. So don't have to know tonight, but think about it, so it's breezy, so.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you. You're welcome.
The next item you will be voting on, we're going to speak a little bit more at the superintendent and the superintendent's update. However, I am very, very excited to share with you, if you remember, part of our strategic plan, our comprehensive plan and part of our district goals was to increase partnerships and increase opportunities. And as of tonight, after this meeting, our summer learning opportunities will be, able to be viewed and registration will be opening soon. There are currently approximately 25 to 30 summer learning opportunities that will be provided between July 8th and August 8th for our Great Valley residents. So it's not necessary, necessary for students to be students in the district, but they, it is open to Great Valley residents. And when we talk about return on investment and academic return on investment, this is certainly a wonderful opportunity for students to come together. And the, most of these opportunities are offered by our current teaching staff or employees. So movie-making fun, stop motion, animation, film and fun. So there are a lot of different opportunities that will be available and you'll be just approving the allowance of those opportunities next week as part of the agenda. So more to come on that.
And those are, I think you described a month-long type timeframe or weekly?
They are weeks. There are, yes, weekly programs, Monday through Thursday, and some are half-days in the morning or the afternoon and some are full days. I really have to say a huge thank you to Abby Linderman, who led this initiative in concert with Jen Blake, who facilitated the access to this happening. A lot of incredible communication with Dr. O'Toole and the Department of Teaching and Learning, Ms. Beck, Mrs. Beck, and multiple, multiple teachers and communications. So it is really, I'm incredibly excited, as you know, this is something that we've been working on and it will come to fruition starting July 8th. So again, if folks are listening and they're thinking they'd like to get a glimpse at folks in action doing amazing, fun things, go to the campuses of our schools from July 8th to August 8th. More to come on this, but I just wanted to let you know that this will be an item that we'll be voting on next week.
Do we know when information will be available?
Yes, this evening. It will be on the website where you'll be able to click the links and view some of those opportunities. Again, they are all subject to enrollment. If we have any experiences that are not wanted, then they may not be offered.
And I assume nothing will, nobody will be allowed to sign up until after next week or so, because we still have to prove.
Yes, you're gonna prove it, right, right.
And these are based, fee-based?
Yes, they are fee-based and.
Depending on the course.
Again, in concert to one of our other goals was to increase our partnerships. So there are some community organizations that will also be providing summer learning experiences as part of that partnership. So I'm very excited and we just wanted to get the information out in front of people so as they're planning summer vacations, they can earmark these dates and know that there'd be things for our students and family members to do.
All right. More to come. All right, the enrollment numbers are there for review. Policy.
I'm actually going to turn this over to my colleague to let her read the report.
Take it away.
All right.
Three pages long.
Okay, we can go back and forth. So the first policy was policy 203 on communicable diseases. It sounds scarier than it is there. No changes were recommended by the committee. Any changes that were made were in consultation with the nurses and the teams at the schools, so we were fine with that from the committee perspective. 702 was gifts and donations. The attorney recommended breaking it into three different policies and PASBA, the, the Pennsylvania School Board Association, makes that same recommendation. So it's going to go into three policies, 702, gifts and donations, 715, naming rights, which is new, and policy 707. And that, that's going to be known as 714, commercial advertising. So one big policy on gifts and donations becomes gifts and donations, naming rights, and commercial advertising, which are really three separate issues. So it'll be easier for people to find what they need that way. 707.1, that's, that's the old facility, it was called facility advertising, it's now going to be called commercial advertising, so it's clearer because we have guidelines around advertising from commercial endeavors, commercial companies. That new policy, 714, on commercial advertising, again, this gets a little complicated here, that, this is just confirming, we confirmed that we did want to change it from facility advertising to commercial advertising. We added administrative guidelines to make it clear how to implement it. There was a lengthy discussion on the difference between what commercial and non-commercial advertising is. It really isn't the kind of entity that's a commercial or non-commercial, it's, it's what they're advertising if it's for commercial purposes or not. And Dr. Gafredo took that back to the attorney and confirmed that what we all wanted to go forward with in the, in the meeting was the right way to go. So it was good discussion. There's a naming rights policy, there were no changes recommended for that. There was a policy 707, we discussed, which is facility use. That's really important because lots of outside groups and school-related groups use our facilities. This was revised at the meeting in January and the appendices attached to policy were edited to reflect updates made to the policy. 707, appendix A, identifies the group classifications. There's different groups and they are charged different rates. No changes were made to that. The appendix B of 707 was updated to include rules and guidelines related to kitchen use and use of the stadium and minor change, it said Gatorade, there was a reference to using Gatorade and we changed it to sports drinks to not be commercial ourselves there. Application, sorry, appendix C in the same, same policy 707, there was an indemnification agreement and that requires the user to verify they have read all the rules and guidelines. So even if you're just renting it for a meeting where you're not going to be, you know, using different parts of the facility that are part of what you rented, you still have to read everything just to make sure that it's clear, you know what to do in the kitchen, et cetera, if that's part of what's involved. Then there's another appendix on the fee schedule, no changes were made to the fees. That's really important for those watching and listening. On the, the AG, the administrative guideline language was, it was added to address issues concerning cancellations, to make it clear what the fees were related to cancellation. So it will be really important for anybody who rents the facility to reread that, that policy and become familiar with it. And I know the district business office plans to inform those who use this regularly so they'll, they'll know what, of any changes and be aware of them. Policy 810 was transportation. So we are recommending for repeal, some of the older policies, it'll be rolled into a new number 810. So 810.1 is related to, point one is related to drug and alcohol testing covered, and which, what drivers are covered. And that will not be recommend, that, that will be recommended for repeal since the district doesn't hire bus drivers. 810.1A is around covered drivers and that'll be made more comprehensive to include all drivers because it used to separate out employees versus not. Now it's just everybody who's covered. On the AG for 810 related to transportation, Dr. Gafredo stated that throughout the policy and administrative guidelines, the term applicable law is referenced, that's in the policies. There was a policy, a, a note in the policy around school bus idling, that's addressed in the law, so there's no need to have it in the policy, so we're going to repeal, they're recommending that for repeal. And then there was a piece around eligibility to operate district-owned motor vehicles. The attorney reported that many school districts do not have this policy, but we decided we would keep it anyway, it's nice to know who can use the district-owned vehicles and what the rules are around that. We had some questions that Dr. Gafredo followed up on, on drivers of chartered buses that may be used for field trips, so it's not, you know, a contracted bus service and, and they're covered under the same policies, which is, which we wanted to know. If I move on, just to finish with that policy, in the paragraph under delegation of responsibility in policy 810, the word transported will be changed to assigned. That was just a little confusion we had in the committee because it talked about the district needing to know at any time what kids were transported on a given bus on a given day. We know who's assigned, but we don't know exactly who got on, so we wanted to make that clear unless we start tracking, you know, every kid with a tracker or something, which it could be possible, I guess. 811 was policy on bonding, no changes were made to that policy. 812 on property insurance, no changes. 813 was on other insurance that references, it references COBRA, but they, those are, COBRA is regulated by law, so we didn't need to be describing it in our own policy so that those references will come out. 831 and the related administrative guideline was on bus routes, stops and schedules. It's straightforward, there was some wording in there around least, in reference to least cost, we, we took that out. I mean, it, it goes on to speak about just the most efficient route and we thought that would cover it. And then finally, we covered a lot in this meeting, and I'm covering a lot reading this. 918 is parent involvement for Title I. That, that was called title, it was called parent involvement and the policy title is being changed to parent and family engagement, because that's what's called for in the federal programs audit. So there's no change in the policy, just the title to, to meet the need. So this meeting took place earlier this month and the next meeting, for anyone who wants to come in and listen to these discussions in more detail, is on Tuesday, March 5th at 7:30 in the district building.
AM.
AM, yes.
AM, yes.
At 7:30 AM, yes.
Thank you.
I know why you want me to read it.
And if you want to read them in detail, they're on the website. So listed there is the first readings, the first reading for repeal, so we'll be reviewing those again and then voting on them next month. And then the second readings, and the second readings for repeal are on here, and we will be voting on those next week.
Yes.
All right. All right, superintendent update.
Once again, this is just a snippet of the amazing things that are going on throughout the district and it truly is a joy. Our Blizzard of Kindness, the KDM Service Council spearheaded a Blizzard of Kindness campaign. All students were given a link to the chain, and you can see it strewn throughout the picture. The links were attached together and, and were displayed in the main hallway and throughout the school. Each link contained a positive affirmation and/or a message of kindness. Also, Mrs. Davis and students from Great Valley High School, Caroline Duvier, Susan Dunn, and Emma Gray, designed and painted a beautiful kindness mural. The mural can be found in the K1 wing at Katie Markley Elementary School. Our distinguished school of Pennsylvania, General Wayne, was honored at the distinguished school of excellence for Pennsylvania for the 2018-19 school year. Classroom teachers Amy White and Kathy Carrigan, administrators Bonnie Citron and Abby Linderman, attended the ISP Improving School Performance Conference in Pittsburgh. They presented on growing, strong readers. The presentation taught how data analysis can be used and applied to plan and deliver instruction in general education classrooms and small group tier classes. Participants left with strategies and supports they could use in their own classrooms or schools. The presentation was one of the highest-attended sessions at the conference. Our Great Valley High School student earned Hispanic Heritage Foundation Youth Award. Great Valley High School student Alyssa Malinato received the Hispanic Heritage Foundation Youth Award. She received the Gold Award in Healthcare and Science category. In addition to receiving a scholarship, Alyssa was featured in an article about the award ceremony in a publication called El Tiempo Latino. So congratulations to Alyssa on that award. Our second graders at General Wayne Elementary School celebrated a week of, weeks of hard work related to their nonfiction unit. Once again, the focus of the study was on dogs, working dogs, service dogs, police dogs, and Hollywood dogs. And as you can see, the title of Gone to the Dogs. As a culminating event, General Wayne held a dog expo with, where parents, students, and staff were invited to hear the students' presentations and check out their learning. It truly was a wonderful opportunity and the talent and hard work of our students was really a marvel, a lot of fun. Two new topics were added to our speaker series. The first is in collaboration with the community partner, Be a Part of the Conversation, and it is called Addiction 101. The earlier start time of 4:00 PM, please note that, most of our speaker series have started at 6:30 or later. This interactive conversation will include individuals in recovery as well as treatment professionals and will explore why some people become addicted while others do not. It will also look at the factors and how to respond when we're concerned about someone's substance abuse. The second opportunity will bring Dr. Ken Ginsburg to Great Valley to speak on raising children and teens to thrive in a challenging world. This event is Tuesday, April 30th from 6:30 to 8:30. Dr. Ginsburg is a pediatrician specializing in adolescent medicine at the Children's Hospital in Philadelphia and a professor of pediatrics at the University of Pennsylvania School of Medicine. He will speak to building on the strength of teenagers by fostering their internal resilience. His goal is to translate the best of what is known from research and practice into practical approaches parents, professionals, and communities can use to prepare children and teens to thrive. All of our opportunities are available for registration on the website. And again, the speaker series is really an effort to maximize opportunity to engage with the community and our staff and internal students, parents, and community members to have conversations about those issues that are most important to the health and well-being of our children. Our summer learning opportunities, as seen, and Mr. Linderman will click on the link. If you go to the website, this is what you will see. Registration will be opening soon and on the left-hand side, the preview, by clicking on each week, you will be able to see what opportunities are provided and the grade in which it would be appropriate for students to attend. So as you can see, there's a little description of each of the opportunities and incoming grade means it would be appropriate for students entering third grade, for example, in the 1920 school year. in the 1920 school year. So there are a plethora of opportunities. As you can see, some of the opportunities are offered in the morning from 9:00 to 12:00. Others are offered all day from 9:00 to 3:00. And the opportunities are really exciting and a great way for students not only to learn amazing things, but to also be with some of their friends and neighbors learning exciting things. Next, we have our upcoming events. And as you can see, tomorrow, we've taken off the Katie Markley Heritage Night because we, for those of you who have not gotten the notification, tomorrow will be a school closure day. So we will not have school tomorrow based on the pending forecast. And I just want to say, if we get absolutely no precipitation tomorrow, I would beg for grace. I would prefer us to not trust in changing forecasts.
Is there any idea if the KDM Heritage Night is going to be rescheduled or not?
I do believe it will be rescheduled. I do not have that date.
Yeah, but we're looking at the third week in March right now. I'm just waiting for the organizer to confirm her availability.
So Katie Markley is looking at the third week in March. And once that is finalized, that will be communicated.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. February 21st, Thursday evening, is National Junior Honor Society induction. February 22nd, the Sugar Town Talent Show. February 26th, Charlestown Fourth Grade Concert. February 26th through March 21st is kindergarten registration. Again, I understand that some parents have communicated with me, is the decision as to whether we will offer full-day kindergarten made yet? The decision will be made on February 25th. So right before kindergarten registration. And again, this was...
The kindergarten registration starts Monday, 25th.
So if you want to wait to come until February 26th, when you have more information, that is also fine. But again, the meeting was to be held this evening, the voting meeting, however, due to weather, it was pushed to the following week. February 27th, the High School ESL Secondary College and Career Family Night, as well as the Katie Markley First Grade Concert. February 28th, Sugar Town Dr. Seuss Night and the PTO Fair. March 7th is General Wayne Read Across America Family Reading Night. And March 8th, as Millie had shared, at the High School Mr. Great Valley Competition. So if you are looking for things to do to see amazing people in action, please check the school district calendar and come out and join us. Thank you.
Regina, I just want to comment on the speaker series. If you remember back to when you came on and you met with the board members, and I told you that there was one thing I was really concerned about, and it was that I wanted us to be a better partner with mental health and with initiatives, with addiction and opioids and all those things that we as a society tend to not speak about because we're all affected by them. And I want to tell you that I have had such wonderful reports back from people that have been utilizing what you've put together. And personally, I couldn't be happier about it. But one other thing I want to comment on, because oftentimes I can't make those speaker series, I so appreciate that all the resource material that is offered during the presentations for us is available on our website. And I understand that we have Jen Blake to thank for that. It is so easy for me to find the resources. And I am so grateful for that because, like I said, this is really something that's near and dear to me. And I appreciate everybody's efforts. Thank you so much.
And thank you so much, Mrs. Broll. I do need to say that it is truly the team that has brought this to fruition. And Dr. Wexler and her whole team, Dr. O'Toole and his whole team, Ms. Blake has done an amazing job with these partnerships, and truly our staff. Our staff has been incredibly supportive and helpful and participatory in these events and actually have, in many cases, led the charge to say, we need this. And we've found partners who have been incredibly talented in providing the this. Our parents have come out. Our parents have offered suggestions on topics that are concerning to them. So we are living the it-takes-a-village mantra, and I'm just really, really honored that I'm a part of the Great Valley Village. So thank you. And a big thank you to the parents and community members because it truly has been a wonderful work in progress.
All right. Facilities.
So Ken's going to take you through the five- and 10-year plan. He's also probably going to hit most of the other stuff on the list up to 506. 507 is going to take a little bit of time. I quite frankly forgot that was there. I was thinking the budget was only going to keep you from leaving here tonight, but forgot about that. So Ken will go through this five- and 10-year plan, which has been, you've had it along with some other documents that were on there. Go ahead.
Thank you. Taking a look at the current five- and 10-year plan as submitted, we want to pay particular attention to the fiscal year 1920 and 2021. Moving forward through 1920, some of the projects that we're going to highlight this evening, as you'll see, there's a multitude of variation in projects. We're going to hit the bigger ones. Charlestown Elementary School, part of the roof there is slated to be replaced. That's the shingled portion on the original Charlestown portion of the building. As well as Sugar Town, some roofing replacement for that building also. Those are lumped together as one project with our roofing consultant, who has just finalized all the specs on that, presented it to us in the Buildings and Grounds Department for review and looking to go out to bid next month on that. And we should have something for you for April approval on those two projects. Looking at the high school, a couple of projects there. We have the hot water generation replacement. These are the generators that create the hot water for daily use, hand washing, showers, kitchen, laundry, and so forth. Tennis court repairs, we talked about that, and that's already been submitted and approved. So we'll be moving forward with those. Fire alarm panel at Katie Markley, much like the project that we just completed at General Wayne this past summer. Katie Markley will be getting a similar upgrade. And then one of the big projects there, the middle school concrete sidewalk renovation. That's one of the biggest projects slated for this summer, as you know. That project was actually, if we look at outlining years, was originally designed as a three-phase project. Phase one this coming summer, phase two the following year, and phase three, and so on. In the plan, we have phases two and three lumped together to try to complete in one summer because of the potential savings that were brought to our attention by doing that from the architect.
What can we do in the future never to have that situation happen again?
Well, we're planning, going forward with this project, we're going to be doing a lot more extensive testing and oversight of the actual concrete, the compaction, and the drying method. We're looking at hiring a third-party testing agency, which will be going out for RFB here shortly, to oversee that. And by doing that, we'll actually get a better product that will last longer.
And then I assume there's someone who also investigates deicing agents to make sure that doesn't contribute to preliminary, to early failures, like you guys are on top of all that, I assume?
Yeah, I mean, we do try to monitor the amount of salt that we put down for icy conditions. And with this project, we have the snow melt system there, which takes care of a lot of it. But a lot of it was really had to do with the concrete itself, the mixing and the drying of it, more than anything. Also, the compaction of the subgrade below it was determined to be the most failure.
It's an expensive lesson to learn, so thank you for being on top of it.
So that's why you'll see that project brought in to two years, to try to take advantage of some of the potential savings there with lumping those two projects. One of the other big projects we wanted to kind of turn the attention to is in 2021 is the stadium turf and track renovation that would possibly be happening at the same time as phase two and three at the middle school. So with you tonight for approval is the geological testing in preparation for that. So the geological testing will be taking a look at the default line and possible remediation if, and if need be, prior to doing that construction project there. So...
So essentially, if the geophysical testing, that the company will come in and, what's the name of the company?
CMT.
Yeah, CMT. Yeah, they come in and they basically do a sonar chart of underneath the football field where our sinkhole is. Because one of the big projects for the turf project in 2021 is making sure the sinkhole is stabilized and doesn't have a problem in the future. So Sean, who happens to be a district resident, works for this company, has been our sinkhole expert over the past few years, has recommended doing this testing because he thinks that depending on how the testing comes back, it could be something we may actually be able to do this summer. So in other words, pull some of the money out of the 2021 budget forward, kind of right after graduation, basically unzip the turf field, pull it back, fix it, temporarily zip it back together for one more season than, or one more school year. And then that way, next summer, assuming everything works, you would just be able to replace the turf then in the summer of '20, which is a relatively simple process of basically changing your shirt and pants, as long as you don't have to have surgery and get your knee taken care of or whatever you have. Oh, that's you, Dave. But so, because we are, quite frankly, a little afraid that if we do, if it becomes more intense than, and we could find out it's more intense, it's kind of what we fear, but we're hopeful. If it is more intense, when you do this project in 2020, you actually could probably take the athletic complex out of play for the better part of the whole school year. Because we would not be able to finish the sinkhole remediation. It'll take the better part of all summer to do that. And then by the time you start doing the turf and depending on weather, so, not something. So when we were brought this option of a, the cost of the fix in there is...
Eighty-five hundred.
Or cost of the test is, what'd you say?
Eighty-five hundred.
Yeah. And this is something we'd have to have done anyway. It seemed like a no-brainer. So if we're able to do it for a relatively reasonable amount of money and time this summer, the recommendation is to kind of unzip the field, peel it back, fix it, put it back together. What that also does is two things, is if we fix the sinkhole or appear to fix the sinkhole, you have a whole year to see if it comes back before you put the new turf in. And generally, if it's going to come back, it's going to come back quick. When we put the initial turf down, it came quick, and we've been fixing it ever since. So, sorry, jumping on Kenny's parade here.
So can I ask a couple of questions? I'd love to ask you, Kenny, but unfortunately, it's where Chuck sits. So I have in front of me the Capital Projects Fund Plan, and I'm looking at it from 2019, '20 to 2024, 2029. And it's very well done, seems to be pretty comprehensive, but I have a couple of concerns because I used to sit on that committee, if you remember, the facilities committee. I know that we put a lot of things off on the three years that I was on that committee that never got done, and some of which I don't even know where they are on this list. I want to make sure that I'm not just looking at numbers. So I guess my first concern is that your team put this together, looks great. How are we funding this budget every year? And then I see in the 2024, 2029 year, we have a major renovation of $165 million. So I'm wondering how that, I'm trying to figure out how to ask this question in a question way.
Let me answer the question before you give me the question.
Go ahead.
And Ken and I actually talked about this today. We have focused on the next two years as the realistic things we need to do. The things in years three, four, and five are things we know we need to do, but pending your facility's feasibility study, because that could change things. It could keep things the same. So what, it could change things. So we did not, we know there are some severe things that need, the sidewalk has to happen. The stadium turf has to be replaced, you know, within the next two years. So those are, and the roofing that we have going on needs to be done. So when you peel those other things away, it's very small things. So we've been funding it. You have a capital reserve contribution of a little over $4 million a year that was taken from the almost $5 million in debt service. When we get to budget, I'm going to talk a little bit about some things you may want to consider. And thus why I was, I had some conversations with Mike Lilly's of RBC about how you may want to kind of take this gigantic plane into takeoff mode because you're going to have to take off at some point. And circling back, now I'm going to get eye rolls from Dan and Joanna and Stephen because back in 1994, when things were easier and the special ed department was one person and a half a secretary, we started planning the funding of the renovation projects four years before we broke ground. You're going to need to think about how you're going to do that at some point because, you know, you will have to do something. What will it be? I don't know. That's, and I won't be here, but you're going to have to do something, so we'll talk about that. But we do have a $4 million plus or minus line item. And basically, if you go to the chart that says, the first chart there that says the five- and 10-year plan, you can see that even with the $4 million, we still kind of dwindle down into nothingsville toward the end. But, and actually, that chart needs to be updated because that's, I had some pre-numbers in there before we changed some of the numbers based on what we talked about in the past couple of weeks. But still, you're looking at kind of dispending some of your money. But keeping, trying to keep the balance, the balance right now in the capital reserve fund is about the end of the year. We're projecting it to be about $2.4 million. In five years, we project it to be about $1.8, $1.9 million. So you're close, but no cigar. You're not gaining money. You're not losing a tremendous amount of money. And you're going to have to do something else between now and then.
We can talk about this in the finance now, but, you know, it doesn't matter to me here, but since you broached it. You know, in your budget proposal last month, and I think one similarly here, it shows that we can achieve our needs for next year under Act One. But I think we, as a board, should start thinking about, should we go to Act One and shore up some of that general fund? Because all indications are whether we're going to be fixing, adding, or building is coming, right? And as this is indicating that, you know, we're not gaining ground and we need to start gaining ground, as you've indicated.
Right, so the proposal's...
I'd say it's something we got to start thinking about. It's not something we got to discuss tonight. Doesn't mean we have to decide tonight.
Right, and the plan is just a plan in your mind. And you're already thinking that way, Dave. This is, you know, and I kind of alluded to this, your budget could be probably as low as zero if you want it to be this year. But do you pick a target number of X amount of dollars and start to pre-fund the potential debt service down the road? Knowing that if you don't use it all, you can... if you don't use it all, you can then reduce it down the road when you need it? But working on some numbers with Mike on what every half a million or every million dollars that you put away that you would not use for capital projects, it would be kind of a placeholder in reserve in the general fund because you need to do, you can't do it all at once. If you do it all at once, if you need to borrow $75 million, that may mean a $5 million hit in your general fund. But if you started this year with 750 or a million extra and did that every year for a couple of years, you would not only accumulate some cash to reduce what you have to borrow, but you'd have the money in place to pay your mortgage.
And my understanding from talking to other school board members is that among the school boards that are pretty well managed, this is common practice, not to do everything last minute in one big trunk.
That's why you might to talk about it now, even before the feasibility study starts. I mean, you're going to have a feasibility study, but you need to make a decision on starting down this road before you get the feasibility study because it can't hurt you. You know, if the architect, for some miraculous reason, comes back and says, huh, you got plenty of room, you don't need to do anything, your buildings look great, you don't have to spend a dime, well, then you
They're hired.
Well, that's not going to happen. So think about that and I will, we, in the future, in a future meeting, you know, sooner rather than later, I want to have some charts to show you what that means, you know, and what
That's a good idea, just to show exactly what that means as far as saving money, I mean, building up some savings in addition to, like you said, starting to build up a mortgage payment, right? So that down the road, when you
And this is not the number, I'm not proposing you use this number, but just for ease of math, if you did a million dollars a year for three years, at the end of three years, in year four, now you needed to borrow $50 million and that's a $3 million a year mortgage payment, so to speak, for a 15-year bond. I don't know if that's the number, but it's close. So not only would you not have to borrow $50 million because you have $3 million in the bank, you only have to borrow 47, but you have the money in place in your general fund budget to
Cover the mortgage payment.
Cover it without levying more taxes, without going to referendum exceptions, without making severe program cuts to fund something. I mean, it's not uncommon for schools to have to make program cuts to fund facilities if they don't plan well.
And how many referendum votes in the state have ever been successful?
There's a couple.
Couple, right? Yeah, but not, they're not common, right?
They're not, they're not very common. You can do that, but when you do a referendum vote, then you're raising the taxes.
I understand.
And what's, what's failed to remember when you do a referendum vote, and let's say you get a referendum vote passed, is you have the referendum in place and let's say it's, you can levy a mil, whatever it is, you're only allowed to levy that for the length of your bond issue. The minute that bond issue is, so some future board is going to be hamstringed with a budget that all of a sudden goes down by the couple million bucks and so do the taxes.
It's just something I think we all have to start thinking about now with this budget season. I mean, we have five more months, we have to, or four more, whatever it is, probably minus
We have 137 days.
Twenty-seven days less than his retirement, I know, to decide, so, yeah. But yeah, so it's just something we should be thinking about over the next couple of months.
Right, so I plan to have some sheets, some of them could be even interactive, if you want to say, what if it's, what if we did a half a million instead of a million? What if we did 750? We'll be able to do that.
So we didn't mean to steal your thunder and pick on him on finances.
No, it's perfect.
Kenny, do you want to talk about the proposals that are in there for, I'll just jump to, I hate to jump in for, Ken's here because Jim's on his way back from a trip. But on the agenda, you have the geophysical testing, which we did talk about the facilities committee meeting. You also have the proposal
That's the
That's the guy, he comes in and basically, Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, he drew, he like drives these big stakes into the ground all over the football field. And then they take some kind of sonar thing and it does something and it maps out underneath and
But the goal is, the goal is to find the sinkholes or any potential sinkholes that exist under the stadium so that down the road, we can figure out how we're going to fix them.
He will develop a map, some kind of map, and say, this is how we have to fix it. And he'll be able to tell us when he's done with this.
The length, the depth.
I think you can do it over this summer and maybe we suck it up and spend an extra, you know, 75, 150,000, whatever, to do it if it's that small. Or he says it's big and then we start preparing for next summer because we'd have to get ready to start ripping that field apart the day after graduation next summer, next summer. This summer, we would still do it the day after graduation, but hopefully, we'd have a shorter time to do. And if you'd started school after Labor Day, we'd have one more week.
The field says we can do graduation next, the next year inside. But this year, it's got to be outside.
Well, if we had the sinkhole open, it'd be more of a true amphitheater.
It drives you up.
So, and then the water heater is on there.
Yes.
Want to say anything about that?
Just, we talked about 1819, the hot water project, the hot water generator replacement for the high school. That is proposed for approval through 3B Services, who we currently hold a contract with for all of our service and maintenance on our boilers and heating systems currently. Along with the proposal for Katie Markley for the fire alarm system replacement upgrade, that is presented by Keystone Fire Protection, who we, again, currently hold service contracts with for both the high school and General Wayne. Now that they have completed, Keystone Fire Protection's been with us and servicing us for many years. Just want to note that both of these contractors are co-stars, so we are going through cooperative purchasing, bid protected for both of those. One other item is the whiteboards for the high school, the replacement of deteriorating whiteboards in certain classrooms. That's up for vote as well. That is on the 1920 capital funds plan. And then one item left over from the 1819 is the washer dryer replacement at the high When we, also, when we look at our current position for the 1819, there's only a couple items left that we need to kind of button up for the year. That's this washer and dryer, a little bit of lighting upgrade for the General Wayne Auditorium, which is house lighting. It's not theatrical or stage lighting. It's the actual house lightings, as well as a burner upgrade for Katie Markley, which we've already purchased and is currently sitting in the warehouse, ready to be installed in this summer. So that's pretty much it. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just make sure there's no sinkhole. Information report for building uses there. Nothing under transportation or food, so finance.
I'm sorry, I just want to step back. Do you want to cover point five, point seven?
Yeah, probably the most important one.
Thank you, I missed that one. I think the superintendent sent you out the scoring rubric we developed together to try and help you guys get a little more focused on who you may or may not want. We've listed there, we've also attached the responses, the, that you requested, the references and projects. I will add that just kind of for Breslin's sake, they did show references from us, but if you looked at them a little closer, those are old references. The Dave Wren reference was letterhead from when Dave Wren was on my letterhead for my office, so that's over 10 years old. And we, historically, if we've had a good relationship, and I know Kenny and Jim have done the same thing with a contractor or somebody and some school has wanted, we've given a reference on them. So at the time, they did, and I think they were just trying to show that we were happy with them at some point. You know, that being said, I'm okay with anybody.
Yeah, so obviously, all three of them presented viable options. They obviously wouldn't be in business for as long as they are. And their dog and pony shows obviously varied a little bit, but we've got a pretty good track record with Breslin and been pretty happy with them over the years. I mean, for the most part, I take it from what I understand. I mean, is there any reason why we wouldn't go with them? I'm just trying to, I'm not trying to sway anything, I'm just trying to understand.
It's totally up to you guys. I mean, they each bring their own kind of unique thing. I think Regina said it right, you know, Breslin has history. Breslin's been done well for us. Historically, when we did the projects, they were kind of spot on. We only had major change orders at Charlestown and when we did that, and that was really not their fault, it's kind of a rock allowance change order because there is a quarry right next to Charlestown. So most of the other ones, they worked with us through the high school project and the Charlestown projects were all mandate waiver, single prime projects, where we can't do those anymore, the state doesn't let us, but saved us a ton of money. Single prime project is a project where we only had to bid a general contractor for the project, kind of like corporate America does. You know, you bid a big contractor and they vet out all the trades rather than the way schools are forced to do it, which is you have to bid the four major trades. And so whenever there's a job meeting, there's arguments between the plumbers and the electricians and the HVAC guys and the general contractors. So creates a little bit of issue. I mean, that is more important to get changed in the law than prevailing wage because generally, we pay prevailing wage on most stuff anyway, you know, regardless, so that's just what it is.
Do you have a plan for after retirement?
Hmm?
Do you have a plan for after retirement? You willing to take up this fight?
I do have a plan, it's not this. I would love to see it. You know, the, you know, obviously, the Schrader brings a lot of experience from local, from Phoenixville and that area, and the general partner is a resident in the district and knows our district well. And the guy, and the Crabtree people bring the perspective of, you know, you have a graduate of Great Valley, one of their senior partners, he graduated from here and so.
Everybody, anybody else's thoughts on?
Yeah, I'd like to just comment that, you know, in, on the business sector that I'm in personally, there's great value to maintaining a consultant that has longevity, especially if there's been a good business partnership. A lot of the time, whether the other people are alumni or know our district, Breslin has, I think, made a good relationship with us. They are starting above the other two because they have a demonstrated experience. I, you know, in the private sector, that's what you hope for, to have a consultant that you have to use over and over again, that you can actually depend on. I thought they were all, I thought they were all capable. I saw, I investigated each one of them on my own after we interviewed. I think it's going to be interesting next week.
I was really impressed with all of them, obviously, but I particularly was impressed with Crabtree, with the breadth of their experience, with what they've done, with the way they talked about the data right out front, just many things. I could probably spend a half an hour, I have a whole long list of notes that I had made on them, but definitely, they're the ones who, I mean, the others have, to me, it doesn't matter if a person lives in the district personally or went to the district. History with the district is good, that's really good, but whether they live here or were a student here 30 years ago, to me, that's insignificant. I really went up to the firm that would do the best for us and I was very impressed with Crabtree. I mean, I'll go back and look at them all again before next week and we vote, but I just wanted to put that in out there.
I too was very impressed with Crabtree. Again, all of them were excellent. There were many advantages that each of them uniquely offered, but what stood out to me, the Crabtree presentation was the lead certification. I'm sure that that's something that's part of all the design efforts of all the firms, but the student safety and planting that in as something that they really touched upon at the forefront really resonated with me.
Did anybody hear any red flags in any of the presentations that we want to revisit or just any, any red flags that anybody heard? Are there any outstanding concerns major on any of them? Because honestly, I heard them all and I don't know, I'm undecided genuinely, like, I'm not just saying that, I really don't know.
I agree with you, they're not, nobody, nobody was like a shooting star and they were all very good. There was no, oh my God, I'd never use them either.
And there's also the mistake of like, you know, there was one presentation that I liked the most, but I'm not voting for a presentation and that's hard to get by mentally for me. For you guys, probably easier, but a little
No, no, I agree with you. The third, to me, the third presentation was phenomenal, but if you can present, doesn't mean you're a good contractor, right? But I agree, it was, did anybody notice anything that says, ooh, wait a minute here, what's going on? So.
So how can we narrow this down? Like, are we, are we reaching out? I know, Ellen, you said you did some research, but like, to make a really good decision, what do we need to do between now and next week to?
Well, use your rubric. Yeah, I mean, we've gotten a rubric, which is actually a very good way to kind of level the playing field, if you go down that rubric. I appreciated getting that, I thought it really helped. But again, you know, when I make a decision in the private sector, it's, you know, I weight certain things and to me, there's a huge value to BRFA. They have years of doing our projects. They know who we are. I mean, to me, when I look at it, that, I'm weighting that. But short of that, they're all, there's nothing, there's not one of them that I would, would not be able to grasp the majority on. There's not one.
Something I've been trying to ask myself, and I don't know that I have the answer to this, one is how do I take, what, three separate, like, it was chocolate, vanilla, and strawberry. They were all delicious. They were so different, but they were all fantastic. And so trying to make them all one flavor so that I can compare them apples to apples is not something I've been really successful in doing in my own mind, even with the rubric, because they were all fantastic. I also am trying to be very objective about the fact that I'm not an educator and I don't spend all of my time in these buildings and I'm not capable, I can look at their success metrics and have they been on time and on budget, but for those who do educate and have spent time in these buildings, what do you see that is most inspiring and what would you like to see in new buildings that would be most effective for students?
Well, the other thing is, at the end of the day, we'll make a decision, but at the end of the day, the administration and staff have to live with that decision. So I'd like to hear some input on their side to say, not to put them on the spot, but is there a reason that one may be better than another, either from history or past experiences or something you've heard in the field? Because again, we're going to make a decision, walk away, and then a lot of the work's not going to be on our shoulders, it's going to be on
It'll all be fine, what will be best, you know?
I would strongly recommend, in each of the links, you had asked some questions at the end of each of the presentations. The answers to those questions have been provided for you, their feedback has been provided, along with the references of folks that they've worked for, so you can actually see their work. There are contacts there. You, I am sure, will know, will have friends or colleagues that actually live and work in the buildings which they were a part of creating. Thank you. You're right on in saying the process really has to drive the outcome. And that is one thing that, independent of who we use, we will definitely make sure that our community will be a part of those conversations because it really, the form will drive the function and we want to make sure that our function is driving our form. What do we want to happen in our schools, therefore, what should our schools look like in order for that to happen? And independent of what the outcome is. So I would really recommend, as you're looking at the rubric, look at the schools that have been the outcome of those, of their work. been the outcome of those, of their work. And that will give you an idea of how they've used community input to bring up out results because that's really, to me, the strength. I don't know if that helped. I'd be more than happy, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
I would say the easiest part is they're all using, they're all using the same demographer so you can just eliminate that part of the rubric.
Yes.
So, it's a matter of how they use them, although most of them, I believe, are going to, are going to let them rip loose by themselves and then just focus that into their, whatever the final feasibility study is. So, that kind of made it a little, little easier, I think, for you guys. Now, you're just kind of focusing on, on architectural type needs.
And the differentiator again is how they will involve the stakeholders within the decisions because that's, that's important, critically important. And having been through this process a number of times before, that differentiates having an outcome that really aligns to the, the function of the, of the system.
But you described it, and you described a scenario the other night, how sometimes you get that community involvement, but you don't get the real message across the community, right? So, I don't want to give a bad example. So, you know, where, you know, if, you know, getting community involvement but not really paying attention or not getting the message across of, okay, if we do X, what does that really mean to, you know, we built a new facility on Bacton Hill Road. What does that really mean to somebody who lives on the far side of Route 3 for a child to get all the way to Bacton Hill at any grade, right? I mean, high schooler won't care. Obviously, a kindergartner, first grader, that's a long ways on a bus in the morning, right? So, you know, is there, you know, is, in these community involvements, how to, you know, they didn't really express how to get that across well.
Well, I, I think having the conversation and communicating that so that people have an informed understanding of the decisions that are going to be made, I think that's the power of it. Miles from one point to another are not going to change no matter how much you talk it to death, but having those conversations, then people at least understand what the variables are to that decision and will impact outcomes. So, that's what I'm talking about, really bringing people in, bringing teachers in, having administrators talk about what do they visualize outcomes to be. And that's a process and that needs to be really well orchestrated in order to allow people to feel a part of that process. So, at the end of the day, even if it's not what you wanted, you knew you were informed in every step of the way.
Any other questions at this point? We will have to vote and decide on an answer next week.
And if you have more questions, please get them to us early so we can get them from them if we need to get them answered.
Just a process question, how does that vote work?
Yes, so I was just, I was about ready to say, so the process is someone will make a motion to approve one of those three, and then assuming there's a second and approval, it's done. It's not a, let's all vote and, you know, this group gets three votes, that group gets four votes, and the other group got two votes, therefore, this group wins. It's, I want to make a motion to accept this bid from this company. Boom, we approve it or we don't. If it's turned down, then we move on to a second motion.
But there's, there can be discussions.
Yeah, 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 just like any vote, right.
So, could, you could vote for more than one?
No, there won't.
No, not more than one, but if we turn one down.
You can now make another motion to approve.
And now make a motion for a second one, but we still don't agree, we could come back and vote again on the first one.
You could.
Someone could say, now we've all talked, let's go back to the first one.
You could, yep.
Well, no, not actually. It has to be motions, so there's no.
That's what she's saying.
But you can make another motion.
You can motion back to the first.
You already voted down once, you can make a motion 10 minutes later for the same one.
Right.
You can make the same motion twice in the same meeting.
Right.
We could, we could, you could.
Mother Roberts rules. The only person who can do that is the person who made the original motion.
No, you can't.
Motion to reconsider.
Right.
Motion to reconsider.
Right.
If you had a motion to approve Chuck Linderman Architectural Firm and then it got voted down, which it should, but then you talked about everybody else and you didn't like the day Barrett Architectural Firm, but now you want to hire Chuck Lind, so whoever did the motion would have to have a motion to reconsider.
Right.
And then that motion to reconsider would have to be approved and then you could reconsider the reconsider.
Correct.
Then you vote.
Then you make a motion.
After you approve the reconsider.
All right, so could I ask?
Chocolate, vanilla, strawberry, you'll go back.
Could I ask?
The goal is if you get an answer.
Yeah, can you? Good, thank you.
But I'll start going back.
I'm ready, I'm ready now.
So, brought up to speed and make sure it fills up to speed, so he saw the presentation, so. All right. Now, moving on to finance.
And this is an hour and 20-minute presentation, so get comfortable.
When are they not?
I will try and make this as quick as possible. A lot of it's a repeat from before, so I will be as quick as possible. Note, it says February 11th, it's actually February 19th. So, we've talked about the pension issue and, and the presentation is pretty long and has a lot of data in it, and that's purposeful so that if you wanted to go back to it, you can go back to it at any point and see it later and not have to be really paying attention to me if you don't want to pay attention. So, this is the pension issue shown in dollars, in, in thousands, so it's really millions there. The variables are the same variables every year. We'll see what the new, we had the governor's budget came out last week, not a big surprise, a little bit squeaking about some different things, but not a, nothing much for us.
Not enough movement.
Not, not enough movement. Here's our reserves, we've talked about them, I'm going to get into some other things, our planned use of reserves for next year, we are done with the pension reserve. This is our debt amortization and this is something, when we talk about the, the funding of the debt, as we already talked, there's also some other things you can do with this debt amortization schedule. So, you can actually have some money and you can do what they call wrap your debt. So, you would basically say, we'll pay a little bit now and a lot later to get more debt because you see, you can basically say, you, you want to level the debt off at X dollars. Let's say you end up with $2 million in place and you want to borrow a number of money. So, $2 million on, on the 2021 budget would be 7.1 million. So, you want to keep your debt service at 7.1 million. That enables you to borrow more because if you push that 7.1 million now flat across the, the trend line there, it gets you some more and that's called wrapping the debt around what debt you have right now. So.
Let's utilize what we already have, kind of keeping it.
It's, it's just saying, let's keep it. We actually, you actually did a little tiny bit of that a couple of years ago when, when we were going to refinance that one debt and the board opted to do a $10 million issue. We paid off the debt, 2014, we paid off the, the $3 million something that was left and borrowed a little bit more of the rest, kept the debt service the same, I think it was $500,000 or $600,000 in that one debt, debt line. So, you, you, you've done a little bit of that, that's kind of like a teaser of it. These are the major increases, no, no big change from the last time. These budget numbers are the same as they were the last time, we're at 100, a little over 110 million. Sources are the same. Enrollment, this is enrollment based on half-day kindergarten. So, if it's full-day kindergarten, you would probably add about 60 or 70 kids to, to that, that total. Now, it did some changes to some of these, these are some full-day kindergarten data. We did a little bit further drill down of some numbers as it relates to charter school population and the use of full-day kindergarten there. So, based on the demographics of the charter school population, we've readjusted the numbers and you have two trend lines there. You have one trend line showing the original trend line on the bottom that we used before we got into knowing the demographic makeup of these students actually using charter schools for full-day kindergarten now. And the charter schools for full-day kindergarten, it, it, using the, the adjusted trend with the show, using the demographics, actually shows a more dramatic increase for the next couple of years. So, and this is, I want to say conservatively low.
Do we know this cohort of students, as they have matriculated into higher grades, have they returned to Great Valley or have they stayed in charter schools after kindergarten?
That we, we, they have, they have all stayed in charter school, or they have all returned to Great Valley in first grade, most of them, because, because our numbers for the rest of the charter school population, and we have 70 kids in charter schools and 18 of them are kindergarten. The other grade levels are two or three each.
Oftentimes, that's only impacted typically when there is a sibling involved. So, if you have a kindergartner and a first grader, you might wait the two years so that your two children, if there's a larger gap, and that showed up in our, in our results as well.
So, this is an adjusted trend of the cost of the kindergarten cost for charter schools. And we've made that, so this year, this year, our cost for kinder, kids, charter school students that are attending full-day kindergarten is $283,000. Next year will be $390,000. Now, again, conservative, we only use the regular education cost as the estimate, which is, which is $15,771 for this year, going to $16,600 for next year. And the special ed, which we have not factored in, any special ed, because generally, what we've seen is the special ed are coming from the early intervention, which end up coming to our school and spending the full day in our school, at least for kindergarten, not in great beginnings, they're in the kindergarten class and then they get supports, the, the other, so that's a different kind of cohort of kids. But as you can see, the numbers continue to grow. So, with the new num.
One more question. As these students are identified with special education needs and given IEPs, do those IEPs then follow them back to Great Valley when they come back?
Oh, absolutely. If you, if you get an IEP, it doesn't matter where, Joanna could correct me if I'm wrong, they follow you right back here. So, you could get an IEP at, you know, Chuck's Charter School or Dave's Charter School and it would come back to Great Valley.
Where Chuck or Dave is incentivized to make sure that child has an IEP.
Right, and, and again, an, an IEP at, most of these special ed students at charter schools have, the services they require are very minimal. I don't want to make it sound minimal, but it's minimal.
Less involved.
They're less involved. You're talking about some OT or PT that's once a cycle or something, something that I argue, you know, we've argued at the state level with PASBO, that I would just rather pay for that service. You know, if you're going to be a special ed student, just charge me for the service. We'll pay you regular ed, charge us for the service, not, this year's cost is $39,900 for a special ed student, next year it'll be almost $44,000.
Well, we have new state reps, so maybe we'll get a chance of.
That charter school lobby is much more powerful.
I see there's a big initiative to change these cyber schools right now.
Yeah, that's.
I want to make sure I understand this, though. So, if the students were with us in kindergarten and we identified their needs to early intervention and could, could fully address and service those needs without an IEP, we could do that? Yeah.
But the other issue is even with an IEP, our cost to service might be $5,000 where our cost to.
Yeah, our cost to service is less. If you have a student.
What we have to pay is $36,000. Yeah, if you just have a student coming in, getting, getting whatever the minimum speech therapy is, you know, once a week or once a cycle, it's, you know, whatever Austiles charges us or whoever the speech people charge us, and that's, that is not 42,000, or it's not the difference between 40,000 and 16,000, it is not that.
And I just do want to say that oftentimes, our students that are in early intervention, the relationships that our student services administrators make with those families in early intervention really is a testament to why those families then come to our kindergarten. It really is all about the relationships that are formed then. However, if they're never involved with our school, there is no relationship formed. And then oftentimes, when they enter into a charter school and they have a need, that need is identified through an IEP and then we're charged at the much greater cost.
So, I, I adjusted the numbers and I realized the numbers I'd given you before were actually this year's numbers. What the cost was for this year was just under 500,000. So, looking at the new projections, using the higher number to projected staffing, which caused it to go up a little bit because of a little bit more, but the savings from charter schools went up a lot bit, a lot, lot. But the, so the net additional cost is about 400,000. So, it's about a little less than $100,000 difference. So, the cost is, is now just under 400,000 next year. Again, I do believe that in the very short time, probably by the time you implement the feasibility study, this cost will be nil or negative.
And anecdotally, like, I've, I've just, I have a kindergartner, I have two older kids, you know, fourth and sixth grade, and I have a four-year-old. But anecdotally, I can tell you that as word gets out there, that you can send your kid for free to a full-day kindergartner, like, word's getting out there. And, and I, I honestly would expect that number to be more as words get out there. It's appealing to me.
Well, that, exactly. We talked about that last month.
We won't get full-day kindergarten, I would consider.
That is exactly what's happening now.
Yeah, I mean.
And certain, and, yeah, in the cohort, in the demographics that we've, the demographic community that we've identified, which is clear and that, that you will have more students going to charter schools.
I, I think that we can have a lot more than we expect. I'm just saying, saying, talking to people in the Moms Club of Malvern, talking to people on the street in Wegmans, that concerns me.
It's also important to know that of the 60 or 70 students that we will gain by doing full-day kindergarten, let's just say 18 or so are coming from charter schools. So, you're already paying their daycare. The other 40 or 50 are coming from private parochial full-day kindergartens where the parents are already willing to pay. So, you know, if you don't do anything, they'll just keep paying. It's just the people that won't pay will continue to.
Yeah, I would say, I wouldn't, I mean, mine was 12 years ago, but I don't know what charter school's relevant. I had no idea that I could have sent my child to charter school instead of paying for full-day kindergarten privately. Had I known, I certainly would have compared and if I found it to be, you know, good or satisfactory academically, I would have done it and saved thousands of dollars. I just had no idea.
And these charter, these charter schools, I believe, are working pretty hard to make that first kindergarten experience phenomenal because they want to have a shot of holding on to these families.
Well, it's, it's, yeah, quite frankly, it's hard. They go to school longer, they're there longer during the day, so their teaching day is longer, their, their student contact day is longer, the kids are there longer. They go more days.
If you work, that's great.
That's great, you don't have to worry about.
If you work, that's great, so if you go.
Or if you have my children, that's great.
So, you know, most of them have a 200-day education year. You know, we have 180 days where the kids are coming to school, so.
Bus rides are longer.
Bus ride, yeah, bus rides are longer. I still want to serve, have flight attendant service on the buses.
But they're safer on the bus than in my car, you know, like, we look at the statistics, so it's not a bad place to be.
Chuck, with what degree of certainty do you stand behind that, that savings number? I mean, that, that's based on projection, but there's no guarantee that.
There's no guarantee on anything. The only thing I can tell you is I used the least number, the smallest numbers I could. I did not inflate them. If I wanted to inflate them, I could make that half that number if you want me to. You know, I can, I'm.
That assumes they, on the charter school savings, that assumes they all come back or?
No, 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 that, that assumes that 75% of them come back.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, yeah. Yeah, so it's a conservative number.
Like, 75, 80%, whatever number worked out to be.
Yeah, but it's a conservative number.
Yeah.
Didn't say all of them are coming back.
Doesn't say all of them are coming back.
Gotcha.
It has none of them being identified as special ed, but that's, that's just a matter of time before we get a few of them. And really, you only need.
That's because we don't have any currently?
Not in kindergarten.
That's what I mean, right now, no, not in kindergarten right now.
But really, if you ended up with two kindergartners, that's almost $100,000. If two of them went there and, and went under special ed, that's another $100,000. But I did not calculate that because I don't want it to be a number where people say, oh, you said we're going to save this much money and we only saved this much money. So, I, while I'm confident in the numbers because it's conservatively low, anything could happen, you know? And these are just the assumptions we made. There's, there's the, $16,263 is next year's number for regular ed and it's 40-some thousand. I, I have that number, I thought I had that in here. And these are just some of the things that we, we used. You know, there's a 26% increase in the kindergarten population. That's based on our cohort model of what we get now in first grade. That's based on our cohort model of what we get now in first grade compared to kindergarten numbers we have now. And, you know, if you think about it out loud in your head, right now you already have two classes in every school with full-day kindergarten. One has Warwick, one has Great Beginnings. So you're already outfitting two classes in every school in a, what I'll call a sort of full-day model. And bussing's not impacted because we're already bussing the kids to and from. You know, will some kids have to go on one bus instead of another because depending on the bus ride? Yeah, of course, but we're, we're confident that there will be no additional bussing And actually, there may be a slight savings in non-public bussing. We, we don't know. We didn't factor any of that in. These are just our class size ranges, that's for that. Here's our staffing that we have in the budget for this year. So we have in the budget right now, as I think I told you, I have it, I have it kind of double dipped in the budget right now. So we have charter school budgeted as if it's going to be the same as this year and we have, have the kindergarten teachers in there as if we're going to be full day. We also see an increase in elementary class size of two to three teachers, but we have no other proposed increases in any classes or in any staff. Now, that could change plus or minus here or there depending on, on how things, you know, on enrollments and stuff. And we will, we do have enough flexibility in the budget to deal with, you know, that extra section of Spanish one or that, you know, all of a sudden we need another middle school teacher because the numbers are too high. But, but in general, there is no targeted additional staff. This is the Act One Index. This year it's 2.3%. Last year was 2.4. Right now, we're actually at a, at a, it has a budget gap of 1.7, which is about a 2.1% increase. But again, got some extra money in there. So this is what the millage would look like. This is the impact on the average taxpayer for the Act One Index. And then this is, this is a little history of our tax increase, tax rates in all the schools. You can see we're at the very, very bottom of the tax rates. And I'd love to get out of this year with our millage being underneath of Westchester somehow, so, so I can leave on the bottom. You always want to leave on the top, but I want to leave on the bottom.
Is that our parting gift?
Be your parting gift is if, let me figure out what Westchester's millage is going to be and will be just a little bit less. So these are our initiatives for the year. It's the same as we shared last month. Now, the capital budget, I'm not going to spend a lot of time, we were talking about this before. I will actually roll this into a future one. I don't want us to get too much longer here. This is our capital reserve budget. This is what our balances show. It's kind of just a chart showing what that other chart was. This is what is in next year's capital reserve fund proposal for 1920. Kenny went over. And these are some, the gap areas that we had. Budget timeline, we're not using the Act One Index, so that's done. Really, the only thing you have, we're targeting in on an April 22 preliminary budget adoption and a June 3 budget. What else do you need? I will try and bring some stuff. I will limit next week's presentation to just the debt discussion, if that's okay.
I understand.
Just, just kind of a, and I, my goal is to give you something to think about because you still have some time to decide on that, you know, what you want to do, you know, how aggressive or how digressive you want to be.
Yeah.
I'm just going to jump in. You have bidding schedule for this year. You have a donation from the PTO to the Great Valley Middle School. You have a, some student partial placements, these are special ed things. Be part of the conversation. This is one of the things that Superintendent was talking about in the, in her thing and there's-
That's an approval for that, that's a contract.
Yeah. And then there's, actually, there's two of them. There's the second one, he's the April guy, too. This PASBO proposal is a proposal to, to do an evaluation of the foundation. Superintendent, I've been talking with the foundation president and this organization, which is PASBO, and the, the guy that would do this, this proposal is, his name's Wayne McCullough. He, he's actually going to be the executive director of PASBO starting in July, but he's, he, he was the executive director of the Southern York Education Foundation, which is probably one of the more successful foundations in the state. Our foundation needs to have an evaluation done. I, I put a little chart in there for you to see, but I wouldn't want to publish that chart too much. The, the foundation needs some help from us and needs some help from the outside to get focused. And so if we split the cost with them on this, this kind of outside person to come in and say, you know, here's what your, here's what the makeup of your board should really look like. You know, most foundation boards are primarily made up of business people, not, not of PTO people or school people. They make up the, those people are very important, but they make up the committee structures and all. And it's, it's like, we have a lot of really great opportunities here that we haven't seized upon. And this is kind of like helping you, if you can get them going in the right direction and get them where they're actually raising money and making an impact for you, there's no reason they shouldn't be into six figures every year as some kind of help to the school for initiatives and, and things like-
I mean, the proposal here is trivial dollars. It's five thousand for half.
Well, it would be a split. It's five thousand each.
It's not a lot of money, but I guess the question is, is if we're, if we spend this money, are they willing to listen and change on what the recommendation is?
Their president is. And I believe they are. I believe they will be. They, they, they very much want these-
I'm not involved enough. Outside view is they seem to be stuck in the same old, same old. So if they're willing to change, that's great. If they're just looking for some guidance and this guy's the right guy to help them, then it's easy money.
There's a lot of issues with the foundation that have been going on for years. Some of them are from us, from the school board, school district part. Some are from them. And it's, you really need somebody from 50 miles away to tell you what-
That knows how to do it.
Right. That has been in a successful operation. The guy has, the, the foundation of Southern York has over 100 business sponsors, sponsors, not, not just contributors. They're sponsors, so.
And Chuck, what's the, the potential for the, for the foundation to be able to write grants? I mean, that, that's just an absolutely huge revenue stream that it just seems to me as, as a fundraiser that we're not taking advantage of.
Right.
I just, one, I mean, I understand we would split this cost with the foundation. They're a totally independent organization of us, correct?
Right. I would call them a component unit. They only are there because we are here.
But aren't we in a way almost making a donation to an independent organization? I mean, are we allowed to do this?
Yeah.
I understand we would want to help them, it's in our advantage, but we're kind of giving money to somebody who's not us.
You could do this all by yourself. We founded the foundation. The school board founded the foundation.
I guess technically she's saying they're, they're, they are a separate legal entity.
They are a separate legal entity.
Right. But we are allowed to do something like this with them.
Right. Because they are, they are more or less what, what the, the financial term is a component unit. If the school district ceased to exist, so would the foundation. If, you know, it's like the PTOs. If the school district ceases to exist, so do the PTOs because they're only here for us. They're a component unit. So they do have some, some like distant cousin relationships with us.
Yeah, maybe one more point as the, as the liaison to the foundation board for this board. I'd love feedback from this group about how we want to participate in the findings or participate in communications with the foundation board. I think this is potentially a great opportunity for a sort of clean slate and a fresh beginning in terms of capitalizing on opportunity, leveraging the spirit and the energy behind the foundation and refocusing that spirit and effort into some meaningful progress for students.
I mean, personally, I think this is a great start and we ought to see what comes out of this and then go from there on what we need to do. And like Chuck kind of described, it sounds to me like successful foundations aren't looking for board involvement or school involvement because they're functioning on their own and, and, you know, it's got the businesses in the area.
No doubt. I think there's a, a lack of clarity between what the board, what that board wants to do and what this board wants them to do. And I think if we can all get on the same page, then we divide and conquer.
I think that's the goal.
But I think it's a great opportunity to, to start back at square one.
Yep.
And say, who, who do we all want to be together for our students?
Yeah. And, and I think it would be great if you participated in the, the, you will participate somewhat in the, in the report or in the evaluation. And in the report given, when, when Wayne and the, the current executive director of the Southern York Foundation, who's going to assist him on this, come to do the evaluation, you know, they will want to sit down with, with representatives of the foundation and hopefully some of you guys, so.
The next item is independent contract services for school psychologists. That's when we have an overage. There are certain times of the year that we need outside support. We don't need to hire an additional psychologist, but it's very tied to timelines. The professional development training agreements, these are not new. They are just continuations for the end of the school year. And then the monthly reports are there.
And just, so you, it's going to snow tomorrow because we're scheduled to go to settlement for the land.
I would.
So it actually might be deferred till Thursday or Friday now because of the snow.
I think Keith will be there whether you're there or not.
Well, the FedEx guy picked up the closing documents at 5:35 tonight, so.
That's great news. I wish, I wish the GVCO, uh, great success in this endeavor.
So that will add another million dollars to your capital reserve fund.
Yeah, there you go.
Which I didn't have factored in because I never knew when it was coming.
Yep. And if the closing's not tomorrow, we still don't know, so let's hold off. But this is great news for GVCO, so.
Yes, that's good.
Wish them all well that it's finally moving forward. They've been at this for 20 some odd years, so we need to start back at the beginning. So anyways, all right, nothing other under other? Let's see. Draft agenda items there for next week. This time I'll open the, your microphone up to public comment. If you want to come to the podium and state your name and residency and please let me your time to three minutes or less. All right, so you know what? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
My name is Rachel Gallegos. I'm a resident here in Malvern. I live at 19 Almy Drive. I have a kindergartner at Katie Markley and I have a two-year-old who will be up and rising. So your full-day kindergarten discussion is on our radar in my household and with all our neighbors, anyone we can talk to essentially. So I just wanted to express, I know I can only speak on behalf of myself, but my husband would agree, our full support of full-day kindergarten for lots of obvious reasons. I want to thank Principal Morris for her wonderful presentation. And we have the benefit of Henry's kindergarten teacher being here tonight as well, Ms. Gore. So I can only imagine seeing the absolute enormous learning curve he's been on this year if it were a full day. I think there are obvious benefits to this that are tried and true with scientific evidence and things of that nature that are important and facts and figures that can be demonstrative and can be helpful in making this decision. And as a parent, I am interested in not only my kids' development, but the development of all the kids in our community because we believe in being good community members and we know that the community thrives on all of us participating. And that starts at the earliest stages, which we're hearing more and more, is this early, early, early education. And there's so much focus on pre-K and K and the value of that and the value of vocabulary and reading and, and et cetera, et cetera, that you've heard probably at nauseam at this point. So I think it's beneficial, not only, certainly, I'm biased, I have kids in the district, I have, I have daycare costs that are extraordinary and this would help alleviate that. That's no secret to probably a lot of working parents. But again, I am invested in this community in the long term and I want that investment to start early and often, and I want our kids to be at a great advantage. They already are. We moved from Philadelphia to Great Valley for the school district. We believe in the community and the educators here and we think that a full-day kindergarten would just really put us, continue to put us above and beyond what other school districts can offer. And we'll continue to make Malvern and the Greater Chester Valley a real destination for families and to be a real leader in the education field so that we can start sending our students out and continue to send our students out as we go into college and we go into the workforce, prepared and, and excited and ready to give back to this great community that's been so wonderful. So I appreciate so much the board's commitment to looking into this, to researching, to listening to all the presentations. And please know that there is a lot of support out there. I'm sure you've seen the survey results indicating hopefully great support for a full-day kindergarten program in this district. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, any other comments that I missed? All right, thank you. All right, the board met an executive session beforehand for some personnel issues and legal issues. Mr. Foray and Mrs. Armstrong had previous commitments. That's why they're not, unable to attend tonight. Thank you very much for coming and we'll see you next week. And take the day off tomorrow and enjoy the snow. Be safe.
Freezing rain.